Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the March 7th, 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Pastor Kelvin Cabarrus, Senior Pastor of the Empowerment Ministries Church for more than six years. The church began in the Washington Shores community in 2004 and relocated to Pine Hills in 2005. It prides itself on being more than just a church and a community, but instead it is a community church and is committed to changing the Pine Hills community by educating, equipping, and empowering its citizens through biblical and practical teaching. Pastor Cabarrus's invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District One Commissioner Phil Diamond. Would everybody please stand?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our city government and its officials, namely the mayor and Board of City Commissioners. We pray that blessings upon this quorum and we pray that every purpose be fulfilled according to your will. We ask for your infinite wisdom and significant grace and guidance for our city leaders and we ask your blessings upon our city and its constituents. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, make the termination of the quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Lyman?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Let's take up for consideration the minutes from the February 28th, 2011 Agenda Review and City Council meeting. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. I'll take that. Okay, on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We have no presentations today, recognitions or awards, so we'll go right to the mayor's update. Couple of things, I want to remind everybody that the State of the City address is on Thursday and we've changed the format a little bit, so the speech won't be as lengthy and there'll be more interaction through the web and social media. We've got a ton of questions, so everybody that can be here at 10, please do so, but otherwise you can watch it live on Channel 13 or streaming on our website. Commissioners, last week I updated you on our efforts to help the governor understand that it was possible to construct and operate high-speed rail in the state of Florida without any burden whatsoever on the taxpayers of the state of Florida. And we reached out as the mayors of Orlando, Tampa, Lakeland, and Miami to him and made it unmistakably clear that we could build it without one dime from Florida taxpayers and absolutely no risk to the state. Unfortunately, Governor Scott has chosen to ignore those facts and reiterated his decision that he would reject the federal funding, so at this time I don't see a great possibility that we're going to have high-speed rail between Orlando and Tampa anytime soon, or at least probably in our lifetime, but that's a huge disappointment and we need to continue to work to educate him on the Sun Rail project to make sure that we have that most important project moving forward. I know that we're all disappointed relating to that and there are just areas in the state that were committed to becoming ready for high-speed rail and I know that Commissioner Lyman, along with Christine Kiefavroff, our transportation staff, visited Miami to take a look at their new intermodal center, which would have been the terminus for the Orlando-to-Miami leg of high-speed rail. And I'd like to call on Commissioner Lyman right now to tell us about that project.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Council. I don't want to get sidetracked and talk about the governor, so I'll go straight to our trip to Miami. That was a phenomenal trip and I want to say thanks to Christine for helping me with my minutes. On Friday morning, a delegation from Metro Plan went down to Miami to meet with Congressman Mica. Congressman Mica knows more about rail and transportation than anybody I've ever met and he knows more about it in every city, having worked for many years in Congress on Transportation Committee. One of the, one part of the meeting, of the major part, was to visit the Miami Airport. And my overview is to talk about the transportation investments being made around that airport, Miami International Airport, terminal improvements. Miami Airport is only 3,000 acres. Orlando, Goa, or International Airport is 15,000 acres, so that they're more compact. In order to keep that airport moving with some type of order and out of chaos, a very aggressive and progressive design was made, and that was to move all of the rental car away from the airport, within that 3,000 square miles, but away from the airport in a facility called Miami Intermodal Center. It is one of the, and I've seen a lot of intermodal centers where your train meets, like in Philadelphia and whatnot, where your buses come, but here Miami International Intermodal Center called MIC is comprised of 420 acres. $1.7 billion was invested in this site to move the rental out of the airport. I mean, it's like you can almost run there, walk there if you wanted to, but it was like a two-minute drive on a bus or a people mover, where the traffic going into the airport will literally go into the MIC center first and then into the airport. You can rent your car there, you will come into this center by Tri-Rail, you will come into this center by taxi, by whatever mode of transportation you have, you would go into this facility that cost $1.7 billion. The entire construction plan that we went to look at was about $3 billion, which is about $40 million they're spending a month in construction. That's a lot of jobs and a lot of work being done. In the MIC center, you're going to have cleaners, you're going to have a public-private investment partners, we're cleaners, a pet motel, a number of things that you need before you get to the airport or coming out of the airport. Airport would be designated just for airport business and the things that you do there, pretty much. There are four levels of the MIC center, where you have your Tri-Rail coming in on one, of course they had a level for high-speed rail, they have some for the buses, and the people movers that would take people back and forth from the MIC center to the airport, which you can see it, and it's literally like looking at, standing at City Hall, looking over at the Bohemian Hotel. The one thing that impressed me is that these people have been working on these concepts since 1980, so we know that it takes a lot of time to make things happen and a lot of money, but time is money. And all of these projects, when they started off, were significantly lower in costs than it was when it was completed. Tri-Rail, the completion of Tri-Rail going into the airport was a half a billion dollars. It's about roughly $200 million per mile. So if we're up here arguing about peanuts, Miami is making things happen down there and they have realized the extreme costs of it because of all the delays. I know there was some concern here a few years ago about I-4 and toll lanes. In Miami, they now have I-95 express lanes and those are the center lanes in I-4 at a certain distance where it is a toll. And toll simply means it's a choice that you make, but what has happened, and we saw it even while we were there, the lack of congestion around the airport, it has literally been moved away, including all of those artillery rows that go into the airport. The traffic has been reduced because of the rail system that has been put in place. They have about 90% satisfaction on the use of those lanes. We also had a report on, of course, the airport and the port of Miami. I think Miami may be either the first or second or largest seaport in the country. I know it's large, next to California and Boston and Corpus Christi and whatnot. Corpus Christi is kind of like a peewee in comparison, but they are investing $607 million in dredging and preparing for the expansion of the Panama Canal. The Panama Canal traffic is going to come and flood us and if we're not prepared, the way many of us seem to be moving with our cities and making decisions for the future, it's going to catch us off-guard. So I want to applaud Miami for the work that they're doing in their dredging, they're using tagger grants, they're using private dollars. But I think the Miami port was one project favored by Governor Chris, I mean, what's the new governor's name?
Scott.
Scott, whatever. Can't remember the man's name. But the important thing is, on this trip, and I know Kathy, I'm hoping at some point may want to add more information. The other point, you remember Mobility 2020, we voted down, Miami has a one-half cents county tax for their infrastructure, so they're able to use their own tax dollars, they're able to use private investment dollars, and of course they have millions and billions of dollars that Congressman Mica, as now chairman, and prior to him, Congresswoman Brown or whoever the chairman was in transportation, brought into that community. And even though their unemployment rate, I'm going to ask about it, is about 9.5, it would be far worse if they did not have these billions of dollars in construction. I can easily give you more information on this, from their bus rapid transportation, that's all a part of this, to every little component. That was a superb opportunity for us to go and visit to see what we could have had here in Orlando, and though it may not come in our lifetime, it would surely happen. It will surely happen because it is the best thing for municipalities. Rail is absolutely necessary to remove some of the congestion off of our highways and the other, that we probably can move on there, Dyer, is the center toll or toll along I-4 that will move that a lot quicker. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for the report, Commissioner. And I guess one bright spot, and that is that they started in the 80s and it's now
Thirty years.
Thirty years later that they're getting that complete, so it just takes sometimes a long time to realize some of the vision. Couple other things, last night, I didn't see it, but I was told there was a report on 60 Minutes on the growing number of children and families that are facing homelessness as a result of the economy and the program focused in, on Seminole County and some of the families that are there. And since then, I've had a number of folks ask about how they can help and I wanted to let you know that the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness in partnership with Heart of Florida United Way has launched the Homeless Children and Families Emergency Fund, which is a temporary fund to provide short-term housing assistance to families with minor children who are homeless or face a potential of becoming homeless, and that's an opportunity if you're looking for somewhere to give that you can do that. Couple items, and we have a very light agenda today. We have the Church Street Right-of-Way Agreement back after we've had the discussion on it last week and I think it's more to everybody's liking today, and then sure everybody is happy about receiving $2 million in federal funding for our city sidewalk program, Orlando Walks. With that, we will move to the consent agenda and that's a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of the council, and we give each of the council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda as well as briefly describe some of the goings-on in their individual commission districts. And we take turns on who goes first and we're back to District One Commissioner, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk about two things. Number one is economic development and number two is service. Last week I had the privilege of going to a presentation from the University of Florida describing some of the progress over the new University of Florida Research and Academic Center that's being built down in southeast Orlando, not just the jobs that are currently involved in building the building, but also all the jobs and good things that are going to happen when the building's complete and the university is at work down there. And combined with all the other things in that area, it really, it's a sign of good things to come and I'd encourage everybody to find out more about what's happening there and also just in the southeast region generally. Also, I was honored to participate in Mayor Jacobs' Central Orange County Economic and Job Summit, along with a number of other local officials, other city officials. I thought it was a good summit. It seemed like a lot of good ideas were presented there and I think that's going to lead to more good things to come as well. On the service side, I want to thank the National Honor Society from Lake Nona High School. They were up and out early on Saturday morning at Southport Park, cleaning up the park, doing work in the neighborhood over there as part of a Green Up Orlando project. Good number of students from the school were out there and they were well-led by the city's Green Up Orlando team, Jan Rayhill and Tommy and Antonio, doing good things and really making a difference, so thanks to all them. Also, the other high school in my district, Boone High School, is doing a service project called the Shirt Off Their Back, where they are collecting shirts to benefit migrant farmworkers and they are collecting, I think through the middle of the month, and I want to thank and congratulate them also for their service and trying to make their community a better place. Lastly, speaking of service, we're having our annual Spring District Picnic and Food Drive on March 19th at Amherst Park, 11 o'clock to 2:30 on March 19th. We will also be collecting for Second Harvest Food Bank. We'll be taking non-perishables, canned goods, boxed food, and also collecting donations for Second Harvest Food Bank. The mayor mentioned the 60 Minutes story and it's really no secret that a lot of people are hurting right now, so it, you know, it's a chance to give back to the community and I think a lot of people have heard about Second Harvest's proposed expansion, so I think anything we can do to help them would be good, and again, that is March 19th at 11 o'clock. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
Mine is going to be very short. Thank you, Mayor. All I have to do, all I have is a reminder to our neighborhood leaders, we have our next meeting on March 10th. It's going to be at the Dover Shores Community Center. And on a light note, we had a great meeting this past Friday with Mayor Dyer and the community, senior community at El Dorado Apartments, I'm sorry. And something very peculiar about that meeting is that I learned something about the mayor I didn't know. He knows this poem called "El Dorado." I'd love for the mayor to go ahead and recite the poem here, just like he did over there. I'll leave it up to him. That's all I have.
Since we're trying to keep this meeting brief, I think I'll say that, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just touch on a couple of things in the community and one or two items on the consent agenda. The Baldwin Park Art Jazz Festival is this weekend. It'll start at 10 o'clock over in Village Center. It's a free event, please plan on coming over if you get a chance. On Tuesday, March 15th, we'll have, the Orange County School Board is hosting their final meeting for the Princeton Elementary Innovation Plans, so I'm encouraging those who are involved in College Park, the kids over at Princeton, please come over and look at that. They've been moving that school over to Audubon Park, the old Audubon Park, as a swing school for the year 2011, 2012. The meeting's going to be at 6:30 on March 15th over at the Princeton Elementary Auditorium. On the 19th and 20th, it's my obligation, I think, and I enjoy that, to talk about Lou Gardens, it's in our district and in my district over there. We'll have the plant sale on March 19th and 20th, excited about that. Gardens admissions is free both days and there's a lot of great stuff going on over there and a good, great plant sale. If you hadn't been and attended before, please plan on attending. Also, March 20th is College Park's annual Sunday in the Park event over at Dartmouth Park. And then, of course, the last thing is at Lou Gardens I want to share with you is that Robert Bowden will be sharing the master plan on Tuesday, March 29th at 7 o'clock over at the Gardens Camellia Room, so if you're interested in looking at the master plan from the community, please come and give us your input on those items. On the consent agenda, I apologize for missing the review this morning, I apologize for that. I do have one concern, it doesn't really affect my vote, but I do have a concern over the termination clause around item C1. I'm always uncomfortable having a, I'd say a forced time, but having no time set aside as a termination time, and so I would encourage us to maybe look at that as an alternative. I've talked to Thomas about making sure we're doing some regular evaluation, but we're embarking on something a little bit different and I would love to be able to have a set-in-time point where we can evaluate whether it's successful or not and then determine what modifications we'd like to make to the agreement, so that's a suggestion I would have and, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Move to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's a light agenda and I just want to thank you so much for having the meeting today because if you had not had the meeting, I could not have my new aide, Bill Stevens. He's here today. Bill, stand up so everybody knows who you are. This is Bill. He'll be working with me, I'm delighted to have him in District Four. As you know, Chase Smith, who used to be my long-term aide for seven years, went to Orange County, working for Mayor Theresa Jacobs. We salute him and thank him for his help over the years and want, and you know, he's doing well, but we want to welcome Bill in his new role and I'm sure he's going to do a great job. He comes to us from Sterling Sotheby's Realty and he handled the hurricanes, is a property manager advocate, so basically, we figure if you've gone through the hurricanes, you can handle anything in city government as well, so we appreciate Bill being on board and I really look forward to working with him. On the agenda today, I did have some concerns about the sidewalk program. Again, it's the state government telling us how to do our job, basically, and not being very cooperative, but we're having some issues with grades in some of the historic neighborhoods and some of the downtown neighborhoods. We need to work with those to make sure that we can get sidewalks installed in District Four. Again, it seems like the state government's only standing in the way of progress lately and, Mayor, I know it's been very difficult for you, the last few weeks dealing with, you know, someone who doesn't let facts get in the way of his opinion, but, you know, last I checked, you know, I heard Anthony Joyner say that we elected a governor out of emperor, but it seems like he's been kind of out of his, out of control in a lot of this stuff, but I'm just hoping that we can still do Sun Rail because that's going to be critically important. I know that there are several planned developments within all of our districts that are reliant upon mass transit and commuter rail in order to move forward, that is going to create a tremendous problem in terms of infrastructure, parking, all those kinds of things for our major employers and we desperately need Sun Rail to go forward and I'm hoping that this foolishness is not going to, you know, turn back federal funding for another very, very important transportation mode that's going to be important, not to our city, but to our entire region. And again, I just don't understand, you know, someone who can come from out of nowhere and who makes very strange decisions that are going to impact us for generations, but unfortunately, people seem to be disenfranchised with government and put someone in government who wants to destroy government, those of us who understand that we are public servants, you know, there is public good that comes out of the work of government and it needs to be supported, not destroyed. So thank you, Mayor, for everything that you've done. I know it's been a very difficult time for all of us and wondering what the next ax is going to fall, so to speak, but again, I believe in public service, I believe that government does do some good things, even though we don't get half the credit for the good that we do, but it's important to stay the course and try to keep things rolling. So thank you for your commitment to that and Commissioner Lyman as well for going, you know, and serving for so long on Metro Plan to try to get some of these projects moved forward that are going to be good for our state. And, you know, again, all we can do is keep trying, you know, to move things along forward and it's just a shame that we're stuck in this situation now, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Couldn't agree more. We'll move on to District Five, Commissioner Lyman.
Well, I'm going to see whether he's going to agree with me. On his dime, I didn't say this, but I'm so disappointed in Governor Scott, but when you pay $700, $900 million of your own money to win an office, I guess you do what the hell you want to. And I guess maybe the next move would be, does Florida succeed from the United States of America? And, I mean, to me, that's so unpatriotic to do what we've just done. We've lost tens of thousands of jobs. I don't care what you think about the President of these United States, he is the President, elected by the people of these United States. I mean, there was no question about it, so to interject your personal hatred for someone into thousands of jobs, and some people may not like what I'm saying, but they're the ones who don't have the jobs. And you've got to stop voting against your best interests and we've got to stop this foolishness about Democrats and Republicans and start thinking about the citizens of Florida as I think about the people of Orlando and this region. So I'm just, you're talking about angry. Well, forget that one. Mayor?
Couldn't agree more.
Okay. That's the first time in all these years I've ever asked for approval, but I think that was...
I appreciate you keeping the tone down.
Oh, did I? Oh, boy, thank you, thank you. But it's just, a lot of work has gone into this and it's just very sad about all these people who need jobs and about our economy. You want to keep the unemployment up because you don't want Obama to be successful? What f' line business sense does that make? Okay. Agenda C1 item, I'd like to comment regarding Commissioner Stewart's concerns, is that on C1, there is a clause in that agreement that says either party can cancel anytime we're ready, within 30 days, 30-day notice. So we don't have to sunset it and if you remember, I acknowledged back in '82 or in that area, we started closing Church Street. I did not like it then and I still don't particularly like it, but it works. And I have worked with Byron, I don't see Byron here today, but we've looked at the magic agreement, it did not have all those stipulations, it just simply is not so, and Thomas has worked with the merchants along Church, all the way up to Division and Terry, I presume, to work out something I believe that's fair, so if we have 10 vendors, whether it's closed at Huey or at Garland, that half of who the vendors are will be from Vendor's Way. Vendor's Way will determine whether the closure goes for the West or not. And I like the idea that Thomas and Charles Remdat will be responsible for that. They know those merchants, there you are. And if I miss anything, raise your hand and I'll look for you. I just believe tweaking this and looking after the interests of the West Side makes C1 palatable and certainly makes, you know, make more sense. So I really appreciate all the work we got to immediately after council last week. And I want to comment briefly on agenda item D1. D1 is, I believe, and I've talked to Rodney, and if it's not true, I don't know why we have all these tall guys coming at me, but I'm going to get them if this is not true, but we are implementing, I believe, are trying to reduce the amount of fraud in free and reduced lunch application folks who come to the city for reduced scholarships, offer scholarships. Using the new paradigm and the new qualifications, I believe, will help our staff, in particular putting it on Rodney and his staff, to introduce some new issues here or new points of interest that would help us get residents in the city, residents who are absolutely needy and have hardships that need these after-school programs, need these summer programs, i.e. whatever the hardship is, it could be going through a foreclosure, just lost your job, and those kind of things with your income. So I'm going to pay attention to this myself because of the new requirements, looking at tax returns and unique types of cases, including free and reduced lunches, but I understand there was quite a bit of fraud perpetrated during the applications and I expect us to eliminate quite a bit, probably not all, it's kind of difficult, but I do want to say, I want to thank you. I want to express my thanks for the sidewalks. I mean, unless Governor Scott is going to take that money, unless he's going to take CDBG in HUD dollars, now if you're going to take one area, he may strip us of all federal funds, so does that mean we don't even have the airport anymore? So just a note... So just a notice to you about this. And thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for all the work we've been trying to move forward on these agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll finish with District 6. Commissioner Ains.
Thank you, Mayor. And item I, too, reference the Florida Department of Transportation Local Agency Program Agreement for the Citywide Sidewalk Improvements, Orlando Walks Program. I'd like to thank Jeffrey Arms and Roger Clark for their assistance in keeping me informed as specifically the differences in Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this particular project, and what they're trying to do to assist in providing even more sidewalks in the District 6 area, specifically along McLeod Road, where we do have some real challenging times in dealing with sidewalk issues and that sort of thing. So I'm looking forward to even more dialogue concerning this, so that we can work through trying to do something for McLeod Road. And this past Thursday, on March 3, Commissioner Linum and myself and others attended a luncheon honoring State Senator Gary Siplin at the Crown Plaza Orlando Downtown Hotel. Senator Siplin's legislative accomplishments were outlined. Chief, Florida State Chief Financial Officer Jeff Adwater was on hand to be the guest speaker, and Florida Senate President Mike Herodopolis was also there to be a speaker. And then, of course, on that same Thursday evening, the mayor's City Academy for 2011 was launched by Mayor Dyer, and many commissioners were on hand. Commissioner Diamond and Commissioner Ortiz were on hand, too, for this event. I understand that all of the participants in this academy are all city residents, and that's a good thing, because more people are getting more involved in our city government, and this looks good for us. And then, of course, on Friday, as mentioned by Commissioner Diamond, Mayor Theresa Jacobs held her Central Orange County Economic and Jobs Summit. It was held at the Orange County School Board Auditorium, and specific areas were economic outlook, community business resources, regional economic strategy, and an industry panel, where some of the industry leaders actually heard from members of the audience concerning jobs and economic development within the central Orange County area. And then, on Saturday, I attended the First Annual Central Florida Fatherhood Expo, and this was held at Jones High School Auditorium. Larry Williams, the Executive Director for the Simeon Men Development and Resource Center there at Cypress and South Orange Blossom Trail, started this particular event, and it was a very well-attended event, and it also included a job fair, restoration of civil rights, how to start a business, HIV, information and testing, education and trade fair, and a boot camp for new dads workshop. So this was a very good program there at the Jones High School. And then, of course, on Saturday, March 5, State Senator Gary Siplin and myself, in conjunction with the United States Probation Office, Middle District of Florida, the Florida Department of Corrections, Adult Community Supervision Office, and the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice Probation and Community Intervention, presented a workshop at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, complying with the conditions and learning how to live successfully while on probation or parole. And this was a great event, very informative, and it was good, obviously, for those people that are having those particular concerns, and more specifically, really, it provided some opportunity for them to even know a little bit more about the probation process, and if they were having problems, how they can get involved more, so that they can successfully live while on probation or while on parole. And the last thing that I want to say is, I echo my colleagues on the council as we talk about this high-speed rail initiative, that we just turned back $2.4 billion to the federal government, simply because we have some ideology issues with the President of the United States, and that is just simply wrong, and it is something that is dangerous and reckless as relates with our economy, and more specifically, with our jobs initiative. We're talking about 40,000 jobs that we could have had here in the state of Florida. This was an opportunity, Mayor, where you really worked very hard on this issue, and I, again, want to commend you on that, and all of those that have worked with trying to make this happen, Congresswoman Corrine Brown and Congressman Mica. You guys really ought to be commended, because this is something that would have been great for our state, great for our community, and it would have definitely put us in a position where if we need to get to Miami within an hour, rather than taking an airplane, we could have done it on a train. And the same for Tampa. And just look, we've got the Amway Arena here, Amway Center here, where the Magic play, and then we've got the Tampa Bay Buccaneers that play over in Tampa with the National Football League. And to be able to get on a train, to come from Orlando to Tampa to attend a Bucks game, and then to leave Tampa to come to Orlando to attend a Magic game, it helps to build economic prosperity within both of these communities. And obviously, we have such a great relationship between the cities and the state, that even as we look towards linking Orlando to Jacksonville, I mean, these are opportunities that we could actually see, we could actually feel in touch. But because you have a problem with the President of the United States, who just happens to be a black man, and because your party and your party throughout the country are turning back these dollars just to make a statement, you're really crippling our community, and it's so unfair to our community. And I really hope that somehow or another, there is some resurrection and opportunity that we can revisit this thing, and that this thing can move forward. And with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ortiz. On favor of the motion, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed, motion carries. Lisa, since you have about half of your staff here, would you like to come up and introduce the directors of the community centers?
All right.
See if you know everybody's name.
Well, I know you all know the folks coming down, because you work with them every day in your recreation centers. And actually, I'm going to ask Rodney Williams, since it's Recreation Division staff, to make the introductions. So Taryn, come on over, and Rodney.
Mayor, Commissioners. This great-looking group in all blue back here, this is our blue team. We have Taryn Ruckevitz, who's the manager of Inglewood.
Of course. So I'd first like to thank our director, division manager, and assistant division manager, as well as my district manager, but I'd also like to thank Commissioner Ortiz for all the work that he does for our community center, as well as Dover Shores. So thank you.
Thank you.
And, well, she's also known as Fraud Girl.
No, no, A&amp;P.
A&amp;P. No.
Oh, fraudulent. Now I've got to tell, now I've got to explain why. Taryn, actually, y'all, we're talking about the fraudulent activity that's been happening at some of our community centers, and I really didn't want to talk too much about it, because, you know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but there has been some real problems that have been happening at the community centers, which I actually noticed, working at the centers over the summer, when we're doing a lot of the renovation. Taryn actually is, you know, is actually enrolled in the Free or Reduced Lunch Program, and she's not even a child. So that goes to show you how bad it is, and we actually have some children that are registered, 12 to 15 kids at one address at a single-family home. So that's how bad some of the fraud had been. So I call Taryn fraudulent, because she did it, you know, in the name of city government in order to make sure that we could show that there was a problem, but that's why she has the nickname fraudulent.
Taryn, you're free to come up with a new nickname.
And of course, Ashley Nick, Nikki Purvis is A&amp;P, because we can never know whether to go with Ashley or Nikki, so we just call her A&amp;P.
So you just met Ashley Purvis?
There you go.
Colonial Town Manager.
I'd like to thank you, thank our... I'd like to thank our managers as well for everything they've done for us, as well as Commissioner Sheehan. Thank you for the Orlando Magic, bringing them in and redoing our computer lab and game room. You truly are an inspiration to the kids and the community.
Thank you, sweetie.
Now, we have Robin Payne, who's the College Park Manager.
Hi, I'm Robin Payne, College Park Community Center. I would like to thank everybody for the continued support they give to College Park Community Center, and thank you especially to Commissioner Stewart.
Brenda Scott, Rosemont Manager.
Hi. I would like to dito everything that my colleague said, but I would really like to thank Commissioner Stewart for everything he does for Rosemont. Thank you.
We have Alfredo Ortiz, who's our East District Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. We really feel this new procedure is really going to help the people that need the assistance, the help. Thank you.
The big guy that's hiding back there in the back, that you guys can't miss, Anthony Williams, who's my Assistant Division Manager.
Well, I want to thank Anthony for doing so much for this team. He's just an amazing person and a great leader, and I want to personally thank you for everything that you do for the kids and the families in the city of Orlando.
You mean, he didn't want to thank his Commissioners? I will remember this. Let me tell you, you're the only one to come up here and don't want to say thanks to your five and six Commissioners, and that's shame on you, Anthony. I'm going to get your butt.
Well, Commissioner, we go way back, so you know. Well, I'd like to say thanks to all you guys. I appreciate you. I've been around a long time, and I just always, a pleasure being here.
Again, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your support.
And thank you, guys, for all the great work that you do in family parks and all right. Okay, let's move on to, let's see, hearings ordinance is second reading number one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of the 36th Street right-of-way, generally located north and west of Interstate Highway 4, east of Rio Vista Avenue, and south of 35th Street, comprised of about .33 acres, as requested by an adjacent property owner, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Some of... Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing not all. In favor of the motion, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed, motion carries. All right. Ordinances on first reading, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to neighborhood improvement districts, amending Chapter 40 Orlando City Code to enact the Orlando Neighborhood Improvement District Code, authorizing the subsequent creation of local government neighborhood improvement districts, providing certain limitations on and procedures for the creation of such districts, providing general regulations relating to such districts, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Some of...
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, and second by everybody else on the council.
Commissioner Ains.
Commissioner Ains, okay, we'll do that. Okay, we've got, we talk a lot about the downtown, but we have some great neighborhood commercial districts, and in June of this year, City Council convened a seven-member exploratory committee to look at the downtown south area and to make recommendations, whether it might be appropriate for neighborhood improvement district. In October, we got the recommendations back, and council directed staff to prepare two ordinances, one that allows neighborhood improvement districts, or NIDS, within the city, and secondly, an ordinance that adopts the downtown south NID. And we were having the first reading on the authorizing, enabling legislation related to the NID. So Brooke, you want to come up and give us a quick description of what's contained within the ordinance?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, before I get started, I also want to recognize that we have representatives here from Orlando Health, Greg Lee, Jeff Fromm, and Stephanie Howell are in the audience, and then also, from the downtown south Main Street, Holly Vantour, the Executive Director of the downtown south Main Street. With that, we'll go on into this. Mayor, you've already covered kind of where we've been. October of last year, we were directed to prepare an ordinance allowing for the creation of NIDS, and then a second ordinance, which we'll call an implementation ordinance, related to the downtown south neighborhood improvement district. Before you today, though, is only the enabling ordinance. At the state level, and Kyle had a chance to brief you on this at the workshop last week, we are moving forward with proposing some amendments to the NID state statutes. Congressman, or excuse me, Representative Soto and Senator Simmons have bills that are moving through the process. The purpose of those changes, and actually, the changes were drafted by our very own Kyle Shepard, removes some references to the state Safe Neighborhood Grant Program that no longer exists, it clarifies some of the responsibilities of NIDS, and cleans up some of the terminology. So we'll keep you updated as that moves forward through the state process. The enabling ordinance that is before you today establishes certain criteria and thresholds. Within the NID-enabling ordinance, in order for a NID to be created in the city, the city would establish a governing board, it would require an advisory council, it would only allow for the creation of a NID after a NID exploratory committee has been formed and their report has been brought before you for consideration. It also caps the total number of what we'll call non-Main Street NIDS in the city at two, and the ordinance can be amended, of course, at a future date to adjust that cap. So in essence, what that means is that Main Street groups and Main Street areas are exempt from that two-NID cap. The threshold provisions that are included within the NID and Main Streets are excluded from these thresholds as well. There are revenue generation requirements that each district would generate taxable, or excuse me, $200,000 in revenue based on the levy of a single mill. The proposed district would contain at least 50 parcels of real property and 100 acres of real property, and more than 75% of the land within the proposed district, excluding public facility land, is to be used for non-residential purposes. The purpose of these thresholds is just to make sure that the NIDS that are being established or that are proposed are a large enough area that it makes it financially worthwhile on all parties' behalf. The NID-enabling ordinance also allows for two types of assessments, a special assessment of up to $500 a parcel, as well as an ad valorem tax not to exceed two mills. As we move forward through this process, and when an implementation ordinance is approved, there would be no tax assessment initially. It would require a referendum for special assessment and/or an ad valorem assessment, and the referendum will not be able to occur until 18 months after the adoption of the NID implementation ordinance. And as the mayor said, second reading for the NID-enabling ordinance, we are planning on that for March 28. After that, the downtown south NID implementation ordinance, we believe downtown south will be the first group that moves forward with the creation of a neighborhood improvement district. That will be moving forward, and Orlando Health and downtown south are planning to hold a joint informational meeting prior to the adoption of that ordinance. And timeline with regards to the downtown south ordinance, I think that will be over the next month or two, just depending on how quickly that ordinance can be drafted. So Kyle is here, as well as Kevin Tyuski, if there are any questions.
Questions, anybody? Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. Couple things, Brooke. First of all, thanks for your work and everybody else's work on this. So just to clarify, and if anybody's watching and may be a little confused, today is the first reading of an ordinance that will allow the city to authorize the establishment of these districts around the city, and then the next step for any particular area, be it South Orlando, College Park, or anywhere, would be a separate implementation ordinance, right?
That is correct. Today, again, just allows for the establishment of NIDS within the city, but in order for that to occur, a specific district would have to come forward with an implementation ordinance. So it really is a grassroots-driven... So it really is a grassroots-driven process, and this just provides an avenue for business districts to move forward.
Okay. And those implementation ordinances, they take two readings?
Correct.
Okay. And, and as far as the schedule for the downtown south, what is your thinking about when the first time that would come up?
I think it'll probably be about a month before that process is completed. I'd like to say that in April, we'll be ready to bring the implementation ordinance forward, but of course, that depends on the work that's done within the district itself, and if they're ready to move forward.
Okay. Yeah, because I saw that there was a, either a recommendation or a requirement to have a community meeting, and I think that would be a good thing, because I think there's different levels of understanding and buy-in right now with folks in the areas that'll be affected, so I think that's a good idea to do that. Let me, Mayor, I have a couple of comments, and I don't know if you want to just take questions first.
Why don't we do, ah, go ahead and make comments.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Just a couple of comments. I think, when I talked to, in talking to Brooke about this, a couple of things came up, and even looking at this weekend, I had a couple of thoughts about this, and one is, the ordinance has limits, and I'm not sure why we would put a limit in an ordinance, and then if something else came along that might be a good idea, we'd have to go back and change the ordinance in order to allow us to vote on other ordinance. And I'm thinking about throwing out an amendment to delete the limit section. I'm not sure I see why we would want to limit that at this point, if we have organizations that might meet the criteria. The second thing I've been looking at is, we have criteria for who might be able to do this going forward, and we talk about the number of acres, the number of parcels, and I think it really, the question in my mind is, well, what if you get someone with just one acre less than the, than the threshold, or one parcel less than what we're looking at? And it seems to me like you want to make sure whatever happens makes sense, but I almost wonder if it wouldn't be better to just say, we're gonna require these to be financially feasible and make sense, rather than spelling out criteria which may not make sense in the future, and just force us to have to go back and rewrite an ordinance that's on the books. And I'd be curious to hear from my colleagues what their thoughts are on that. You know, I just think in looking at this, I don't know if we're making this too, too specific at this time, when the real intent, I think, is to make sure whatever might happen in the future is financially feasible and makes sense. So I would just throw that out, and I'd be curious to hear what the thoughts are from the other folks on the, on the council.
Brooke?
Certainly. Commissioner Mayors, Mayor Commissioners, when we looked at crafting this enabling ordinance, there really wasn't a right answer or a wrong answer. What we did is, we actually looked at different commercial districts throughout the city, in the main street areas, of course, and felt like the thresholds that we had established would allow the areas that we thought would want to move forward, move forward. There are just under 30 NIDS currently in the state of Florida, and so the city's ordinance virtually allows for seven in the city itself. But the way a district can be created for a NID, if somebody was just short, I think the lines could be pretty easily moved to bring additional properties in if needed. But what we wanted to make sure of on the city side, the city does have administrative responsibility associated with the administration of the NID. This is a first for us, we've never done it before, and so we also wanted to be cognizant of the fact that we're not exactly sure what it's going, going to entail to implement on the, the city side. And of course, City Council serves as the governing council for those NIDS, and so the action items would be coming before you all from, as well.
Okay, well, here are the people's thoughts. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to commend Kyle and Brooke, and the staff members involved on this. I think this is a great opportunity for, for our city. And I also want to commend, of course, Senator Simmons and Representative Soto for helping us up in Tallahassee to pass this. I think you answered one of my questions, because I had seen that we're, we're gonna have a cap of non-main street NIDS of, of two, but then my question was, how many can we have if they're main street? But you said that the, the max we can have all around the city is seven, so that makes a five in addition to the other two.
The seven, the seven includes the five main street districts that we have, plus two additional non-main street areas. So the downtown south would actually be moving forward, we would associate that as a main street NID.
So, and the reason I'm asking you this is because you know of the existence of this summer-on-business partnership, which is moving forward, and thank to, to the work that you guys have done, and Pauline Eaton, and the rest of the staff, they're moving forward to become a main street. And after that, of course, we're gonna, we're really looking forward to also becoming it, but of course, that comes to the, to the people who are involved, so if they vote on it. But my concern is, how many, if this does work, and we already have five, you said we already have five main streets, right?
That's correct. I see where you're headed. If, if we were to have additional main street groups adopted by the city, then that number would just continue to go up.
So where do we?
Right now, we only have five. If we were to have six, then we would at the future have the potential of having eight NIDS.
So do we put a stop to this? Or, or there's, I mean, are we gonna put a cap to this, or we have?
We don't have, the only cap that is associated with this enabling ordinance is two non-main streets. There is no cap for the overall ordinance.
Okay. Just for the purpose of clarification, when, when we talked about the type of assessments, we said that it could be either a 500 per parcel, and/or, I guess, and that's my next question, it could be either/or, or a two-male, right?
It can be $500 per parcel and up to two mills in a, in a...
But it could be/or also? Does that?
Yes, it doesn't have to be one or the other, but you can have both.
Okay, you can have both.
But they require a referendum.
Exactly. All right. Well, once again, I want to congratulate you guys, because you are bringing great opportunities. By, if we, once we pass this, this is gonna be a great opportunity for our communities to move forward, especially with utilizing our districts. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Sheehan, I don't know who was first, Commissioner Sheehan or Lyman?
Go ahead, Lyman.
Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask whether Commissioner Diamond's recommendation to have this amendment move forward to remove some of the criteria or restrictions. I always like talking about ordinances with a Commissioner, whether it's when staff is doing something anyway, because it's always a different perspective. I'd like to see what that recommendation is, that amendment would look like, because it may just improve the document. So is that something, I don't know, he was just saying in terms of the restrictions you have already embedded?
I think what we would do is, I mean, I don't think it matters either way on the cap, because you got to bring it back to council to create it anyways.
Right, for the second, right, okay.
But on the criteria, I think what, if you're a main street, you automatically can have status as a NID.
That's correct.
And we're talking about the non-main street NIDS. So do we want to tell people what we think they ought to look like, or do we just want two pieces, two parcels, or anybody to create, try to create a NID, I guess, although ultimately, it's, that's kind of the council.
Right. I just thought he was talking about the limitations of land involved, and this could have been removed and tweaked a little bit. Just the opportunity to tweak something that makes it broader, makes it more appealing and attractive, and remove some of the restrictions.
I think we can look at that, even if you were to approve it today, we can look at making changes prior to second reading.
Right. Thank you.
And we're happy to put that information together.
Rather than make it a, a solid minimum threshold, make it a criteria that that's what we're thinking about, so that there is some flexibility, if it's two parcels less, or whatever the other criteria were.
There's some flexibility there, yeah.
Yeah, that gives council flexibility.
Okay, we can do that.
And Commissioner Sheehan?
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I had some, Commissioner Diamond had concerns about notification and participation and reasonable rules, so I'm hearing two completely different sets of concerns now, and I'm trying to figure out where he's going, because I just want to serve the needs of this very important group that's coming forward to, to try to serve their community. So it, rather than make the last-minute changes, what I'd prefer is if we could work together, and I mean, I know I'm here full-time, he's only here part-time, but, you know, I've put a lot of effort and energy into this, and I want to see it move forward, and making last-minute changes, though, I don't like to make changes on the fly at the DS, because we're more likely to make mistakes. So again, I think we've had opportunities to discuss this, and I've heard concerns that he wants regulations and notification, and now I'm here, he has a wet rule, so I'm very confused about how this is happening. So again...
Mayor, can I respond? Commissioner Sheehan, take the opportunity for Commissioner Diamond to broaden something. He's not restricted, he's, he's making it more flexible, and it's not about any one person, anyone.
It won't affect the timing of passing this.
It won't affect anything. This is just the first reading, we got another reading, we do this all the time.
Commissioner Diamond? Yeah, that was my thought, is this is first reading, we can talk about things, and then if we have a consensus, the staff can make whatever changes should be made, and bring it back, and we can vote on it. I think, I think that's the purpose, or one of the purposes of having two readings, is so you have a chance to talk about things, and make sure your, the, the language of your ordinances, and the language of your policy matches what you're, what you're trying to accomplish, so. And that, and that's just it, I just think there might be some spots in the city that might, might be great candidates for this, and I don't want to exclude people, but I certainly want to make sure that when, you know, when they bring things up, they have a chance to participate, and we've got a chance to make good decisions, so that's really all there is to it.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, let me, oh, let me chime in a little bit on this. I, I tend to want to keep it like it is in its current form for a couple of reasons, and one is, the amount of administrative costs and the policy and procedures for moving forward really haven't been set. We're using the, the Soto as kind of a guide, and they fall in this because of the main street anyway, so there's no criteria that should hold up anything from that standpoint. But I am concerned that if we, if we treat it like it's a master plan process, where a group has to come in and present an application fee to help cover our costs to do the administrative tasks to move forward, that really comes out of the policy side, and not so much out of the description side. So I, I guess what I would, what I would say is, I would tend to want to leave it like it is now, and then I'd want to evaluate the process that we've gone through with Soto, if there's a way to streamline that process to make it more flexible to other areas in the community that we think may fit, then I'm prepared, I would be prepared to come back and modify those at that time. But right now, I'm really concerned that, that there's a lot of stuff still yet to be done, that I would hate to have to create the idea that, that there's gonna be 10 or 15 of these kind of at our doorstep, and we really quite don't know this process. And I want to get, I want to get Soto up and running and get it moving. I feel like Commissioner Sheehan, I want to get this thing rolling, because I do have some opportunities in some other locations in my districts, but I don't, I've been holding back on that, because I want to make sure that we don't get multiple units moving forward at a different pace, doing a different process, so.
Kyle, if the legislation passes that Senator Simmons and Representative Soto have filed, will we need to modify this ordinance in any way?
No, sir, not this ordinance. We won't need to. We may need to amend the implementing ordinances, depending on precisely what's in it, but this ordinance itself could, could stay the way it is. It's very brief, it's very generic, it just says, "City of Orlando may, if you decide, create these districts in the future."
Okay. Commissioner Lyman?
I'm trying to figure out the debate, because this recommendation has, doesn't do anything about the timeframes for these NIDS to go forward, just nothing. We've got another reading, and just opening up for more flexibility does, doesn't have any effect on any of the arguments I've heard.
Well, why don't we just draft an amendment of some sort, and we'll look at it on second reading?
Mayor, we'll put together some different options. We can change this to aspirational language as opposed to a hard restriction.
Here's my concern about eliminating criteria. I don't want somebody to think that you can have two part, two lots sitting somewhere in the City of Orlando and create a NID that we then have to administer, or something like that, or five. We want these to be real and substantial.
Just to reiterate staff's concern on this, and we can do, we can do it either way, we'll bring you different options, let you make it, make a choice, but let's remember what we're doing here. By creating one of these neighborhood improvement districts, you are creating a new government, okay? These are dependent special districts, these are going to be things that are going to require some significant oversight and supervision by city staff. So there's going to be significant cost and significant amount of time that we spend on these things. What we don't want to have happen from staff's perspective is that you have, as the Mayor just said, anybody with a couple parcels of land coming in here and expecting that they're going to get a special district created for them.
I don't think we would be that stupid, so.
No, you're right. Two, two small parcels of land, it probably wouldn't make a whole lot of sense, but we can change this language if you'd like to see different options at second reading, so that it becomes more of an aspirational sort of thing, as opposed to a hard, a hard restriction on them.
Commissioner Aings?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, caps the total number of non-main street NIDS in the city at two? And, and why would we want to do that? Wanted to make sure that we had managed, at least on the front end, the total number of NIDS that we're going to have in the city at this point in time. This ordinance, as drafted now, would allow for seven NIDS in the City of Orlando. And again, we felt as if that non-main street cap of two could be amended at any point in time, if you had an area within your districts that wanted to move forward, but it also made it clear that, that there were some criteria, at least at the city level, so that you weren't put in a position where you had, you know, multiples coming forward that you wouldn't be able to necessarily honor their request. But certainly, I mean, we can go back and, and look at that. Again, this was, and when going, as staff went through this process, there was no right answer or wrong answer, we were just trying to evaluate the land perspective.
Ultimately, we have to prove them, but we don't want to get a bunch of people bringing them all through before we actually know how they operate and how they're gonna work.
And let me just clarify, Mayor, if I could, the administrative responsibilities, on a per-district basis, those responsibilities will be included within the actual implementation ordinance. So as we draft the downtown south implementation ordinance, we'll be looking at those administrative costs and determining how those costs will be borne.
Okay. Commissioner Diamond?
I was just gonna ask, I think one thing that might be interesting is, I know these aren't terribly widespread around the state, but I'd be curious to see how other jurisdictions deal with the criteria, because I suspect everybody would have the same concern about, you want to encourage neighborhoods or business districts that want to get together and work together to do that, but on the other hand, you don't want to do things in a way that doesn't make sense from a financial or operational standpoint. So I, I would just be curious how other jurisdictions deal with this. Do they, do they go, do they go with some sort of standard that says it's got to be financially and operationally feasible, or do they actually go into number of acres, and the number of lots, and the amount of revenue to be generated in that way, or some sort of facts and circumstances sort of, sort of test? Because I just think it's, it's hard to have a one-size-fits-all, but on the other hand, I think we probably all have the same goals here, but I was wondering if maybe before, sometime in the next couple of weeks, you can provide that information.
I think I can answer that one. Now, I've looked through a lot of the neighborhood improvement district ordinances across the state, and I don't know of any that has something like this, where you have a threshold that says, nobody below this number, but we'll consider folks above this number. I think what they've done instead is, they've simply told folks it seemed to be too small and it wouldn't make sense, just told them no, rather than to lay it out here in the ordinance. I think the idea here is to let people upfront know, if you, if you've got a district that falls below this threshold, you're gonna have to do a lot of, a lot of convincing to get us to go in and first change this ordinance, the enabling ordinance, which you can always do. You can always change this in the future, if there, if someone comes back in the future, they seem to make a good business plan to you, but they would fall under these thresholds, they can always come back and have this amended. But I haven't seen anybody that's done it in this, in this way.
Okay. And I guess the other thing might be, you know, what sort of app, you know, and maybe you might want to, at some point down the road, spell out what kind of application fees, because you'd probably want some sort of fee to have city staff review it, investigate it, and run the numbers, and make sure something makes sense, and process this, because like you said, Kylie, this is something of a governmental, or quasi-governmental entity that, that might be created, so it seems like that would be something to spell out for folks also, if they're gonna want to go down this road. they're gonna want to go down this road.
Commissioner Sheen?
Well, I mean, it has to be some kind of a governmental entity, because there's a special assessment, and if you have a special assessment, you have to have rules, because if you don't have rules, there's gonna be fraud. So again, I mean, we're just trying to, you know, make reasonable, rational rules, and it's, you know, and you cannot really do a whole lot on a special assessment, $500 or per parcel or whatever, unless you have a significant amount of parcels that can put into that pool. So, again, it's not, it hasn't been capriciously thought through, it's, it's, it's been well thought through. Um, I probably have a little bit more of a level of understanding of it, because I actually spent time on it. So, you know, again, it, the rules aren't trying to be cumbersome, the rules are, because when you've got money, you gotta make sure it's meant properly, especially if you're, if you're collecting that through a special assessment. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? I'm thinking not.
Okay.
All right. Discussion among commissioners, hearing not all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. That concludes, I believe, our business for today. Do we have any general appearances?
We have no general appearances.
All right. Thank you for tuning in or for joining us here in chambers. We're adjourned.